All right, we'll call the Brookings County Commissioner meeting to order for July 12th. Please rise for the pleasure leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we've extended invitation for our citizen to schedule a time on the future commission agenda for an item not listed. Seeing none, we'll move on to number four, approval of the agenda. Any changes or anything like that? Okay, seeing none or hearing none, we'll approve the agenda. Number five, consent agenda, approval of minutes, travel, education requests, personnel, action notices, and human resources report. I'd look for a motion for consent agenda unless there's something that needs to be removed. Is there a second? Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Routine business, approval of claims. Look for a motion. Is there a second?
Second, but I do have a question.
Okay.
On the, under the Weed Department, Claim 101-46154260, Claim for Boot Reimbursement. I believe that's under the union contract, it's for full-time employees. I don't believe the individual here is a full-time employee.
We discussed this yesterday at our Weed Board meeting. But I think we need, I think we need to pull it for now and do a little more research because it was Misty's understanding from Laura that we needed to do this. But I don't think, he's, he's not under Highway and he's not under Sheriff, I'm correct, right? Who are the two union departments. And so I think we need to look into this a little more. Abby, maybe we need your opinion on it if you could at the next meeting.
All right. So do you want to pull that off of the claims? Do that? Okay. So we want to amend the, amend the motion? You had original motion, would you want to amend your motion?
I'd amend it to pull the boot reimbursement in the Weed Department bill.
Okay. A second on that. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on to department head reports. Finance, well, excuse me, actually, Richard, do you want to go ahead and get started?
Mr. Hill is on vacation in Kentucky. I'll be back in the office on Thursday. Just noted as in your packet, the SLA agreement for that. Things been busy in the office, we're busy working on the ordinance updates with our subcommittees and everything's going well with that, so.
What timeframe you thinking we'll start reviewing those?
We're looking at mid-August, having the, the complete zoning board go, go over the rough draft of the subcommittees and then fine-tuning it and going back and rehashing it from there, so I'm looking towards, probably towards the end of the year, first part of next year.
For example, the Lake Sub District Committee, we're waiting now for the Lake Associations to get back to us. We sent letters out last week, they usually have monthly meetings, we probably won't hear back from them until after their August meetings. That's what we're thinking. So we can't get our report to the zoning commission as a whole until after we hear from them.
All right, anything else? All right, thanks, Richard. Chris?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'll be very quick. I handed you out a paper, some of you weren't in here when I did it, but it starts at the top, as you all know, that document. All that is, is just for your knowledge, our ag classification law, passed legislation last year and is effective July 1. We're waiting on Department of Revenue for some direction in how to implement this in the new forms and things. In the past, in order to qualify for ag classification, you had to have at least 28 acres. A 33 and 1/3 of your income had to come from ag, and if you claimed that, you had to bring in your income tax to prove it, which we didn't make copies of or anything, we just to, yep, you're good. And you had to be raising some type of agricultural product on that. This new law, it's kind of self-serving legislation, but now they've revamped, instead of a 33 and 1/3 of your gross income, now you have to make at least $2,500 in the three previous years, or at least an income that equates to 10% of your land value. The 20 acres now doesn't have to be one piece of land, now it has to be within a management unit, as long as it's within 20 air miles. You could own three acres here, four acres here, eight acres here, as long as they're within 20 air miles. It's kind of convoluted. We've got questions into Department of Revenue now that we're seeking clarification on, one being $2,500 in the three previous years. If I'm the new buyer that's coming in, how do I prove I'm? So they said nobody ever thought of that. So we're waiting on some clarification and what direction to go, but we were not in favor of this law, none of the Department, or Departments of Equalization were in favor of this law. Again, it's kind of self-serving legislation for one individual, but it passed. We've got some major issues with it, one being basically anybody that owns a little bit here and a little bit there and a little bit there, if they take hay off, if they sell one cow, we could have a big swing of people coming in to claim for ag classification, which in that case, we would lose quite a bit of valuation and it would have to be picked up in the, in the school funding portion by non-ag probably, or at least a shift in the levy within ag. That's the first thing that I had on here. Second thing is, last year, I let the board know and also at our, at our meeting that we reached our plateau, we hit full productivity last year with our valuation, so these increases in Brookings County are, should have been done. Now we are solely on the eight-year Olympic average, meaning they average the, the surveys from NASS and USDA and all of those deals with SDSU. They take the previous eight years, they throw out the best year, throw out the worst, and average the other six. We're done with our increases. Now I just received our top dollar from Department of Revenue. Last year, our top dollar was $3,693.24 for crop soils. That went down to $3,690.89, a .064% decrease in, in ag land top dollar. So that's good news, I guess, for, for farmers and ag producers. The non-ag top dollar, we have not received yet. I got an email from Department of Revenue, NASS had changed their reporting timeline, so it's not due for them yet, so they don't have it to give to Department of Revenue, so we'll get that at a later date. So the non-ag right now, the, the grass soils, we're not sure where that's going to go yet. But again, that's dependent on the eight-year Olympic average as well. With that, Department of Revenue out of the 66 counties, there's 11 counties now that are not at full productivity yet, but we're one of them that are, we got there last year. So our big increase is every year and every year of 25 or 15%, those days are over now, unless they do some revamping. And the last thing I have is just to remind the board that July 26th and 28th, Jim and I will be traveling to the Schneider Conference, the GIS Conference, to meet with them down there in Ankeny, Iowa, so that's all I have.
All right, questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Vicki?
Good morning. Should have received in your packet a staff report that just kind of went over the law changes that we had mainly in motor V for, starting July 1st. And so just to go over those briefly, the title fees go from $5 to $10, and the state still keeps $5 of that dollars and the county gets $5, so that'll be an increased revenue. Lean notations, the county keeps the whole thing, it goes from $5 to $10, so the county will get to keep the entire $10. Boat admin fee increases from $1 to $3, and the county gets to keep the $3. Refund goes from $5 to $10, and the county gets to keep $10. And also in that bill was a sheriff's service charge increase. And then to go down, ATVs will be charged 4% excise tax, and prior to July 1st, it had to be collected at a dealership or the Department of Revenue, and now we're collecting that money, that all goes to the state. Sellers permits for private sales are now 45 days, the same as a dealer. And it, in House Bill 1095, the exemption for boats went from $2,200 to $2,500, the same as any other motor vehicles that are 11 years or more old. And we also have an exemption to transfer a motor vehicle from a nonprofit as a gift. They won't be charged tax if it's sold or given to somebody within 45 days. And then House Bill 1137 revises the distribution fees on non-commercial gross-weighted vehicles. And they have been increasing in different increments from a bill from a couple of years ago, so now the non-commercial gross-weighted vehicles are at 80% of what commercial vehicles are. And then there's House Bill 1164, which is on a special interest vehicle where they can display just one front license plate, but there are requirements that regard, that are, if you have the front license plate and not the back, they can have, not, the odometer reading has to be less than 6,000 miles, and they also pay a $25 a year fee plus their regular fee. And the odometer will be noted on the registration, and it can never be more than 6,000 miles to qualify for that. And Senate Bill 66 allows a parent of a, or a legal guardian of a child with a substantial physical disability to apply for special handicap plates. Before, the person that was handicapped had to be on the title, now it can be the legal guardian or parent. And then on Senate Bill 2, it revised the distribution of revenue from the alcoholic beverage fund, counties will receive 25% of that money. So last week, there was a lot of changes in the software system, so there's been some glitches, but I think they've got everything pretty much done now, so it is all calculating correctly. So that's kind of what we've been doing in our office, is watching those to make sure everything looks like it's done correctly. Any questions?
On our budget that we discussed on the 21st, are, are anticipated revenues from these changes included in, in the budget?
Yes, yes, we've got everything in there.
Great.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sheriff?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'll be quick. Hopefully. I wasn't, I guess you've met since the 4th, but we had minimum problems on the 4th, so I think it was a good 4th, 4th of July for us, minimum fireworks complaints, so it went, went well. Just, we're still, we still have one individual at large with the home invasions up north, and the US Marshal Services is still assisting us with, with trying to locate him. The third party involved in the burglary at Lemke's Bar and then stole the vehicle and then ended up in the water by Arlington, he was, he was arrested in Iowa, so we'll be, soon as he waves extradition, we'll, we'll be going to get him, and so that'll hopefully clear that up. Other than that, the, just lots of things going on, staying busy, just like other departments are staying busy in their individual departments. Our current inmate population right now is 29 today, and out of that 29, I, I think there's only one or two that are misdemeanors in jail right now, otherwise they're all felons. I don't know if you got my email for, the other day, and show you the range of charges, you know, or, you know, it's, it's not out of control, but our community is changing, and we're seeing more violent type crimes, which puts pressure on the jail too, to keep separation and, and, and those types of things. Probably going to increase probably one correctional officer in the evening hours, just so I have an extra person, just with the individuals in there, it's just, it's just a lot to, sometimes with visitations and other things going on, it's just, it's a lot for two. So other than that, unless you got some questions?
I have.
Go ahead.
Is that okay? You know, with everything that happened in Dallas, are there any morale issues with your department? And I've been listening and, and reading, and as they go over everything, they talk a lot about training and how important training is, and, and we do a lot of training, but they're specifically talking about training on how to deal with citizens that have those concealed carry permits when you do an arrest. Are we doing, I haven't seen anything that specifically addressed that when we talk about training issues. What are we doing with those things?
You know, it's funny, we just had a deputy meeting, and we, we had training on it. We just, we just completed some training. So it is something that we're concerned about. Also, it's something, you know, you know, we have to somehow, with the enhanced concealed weapon, with the training that they have, they talk about what they should do when an officer stops them and so forth, so with the enhanced, there is some citizen training on that part, but somehow, we need to do more with the citizens, what, what they should do or say, you know, when they are stopped and so forth, so that is a concern, but, but we did have training on our side just, just for that, at, two weeks ago, actually. And I'm just hoping that, you know, more citizens maybe will take, you know, it's a little different in, in this part of the country so far, that the things that are happening in other worlds haven't affected us yet in Brookings County. And actually, it's, I was talking with the Assistant Police Chief yesterday, and he's, he said if anything, there's been a lot of support for law enforcement, and that hasn't been on my side too. So it's not affected us yet. It'll be interesting to see once college starts, how, if that changes, because you have a lot of college students that are from different areas, and see if that attitude, if any of that attitudes do come here. But so far, the citizens are very supportive of law enforcement, so it, it puts a toll on us, because there's always a thinking that when, when the guys are going to a routine call, isn't it going to be a routine call, or is it going to be a setup call, or, or whatever? So, you know, my guys are out there by themselves, they might be 20 minutes for backup and stuff, so it, it's something that puts a strain on us, but it's something that we, we talk about and, and in training, we try to deal with those, those types of things, so. I think anytime law enforcement, anybody in law enforcement, it gets shot or killed or hurt, it affects us all in some way, so.
Thank you.
It is here, there was, at the parade, there were protest signs.
Yes, that's true.
So it is here, but I had to laugh at the individuals that were watching the parade around those individuals that were carrying the signs, they told them to get behind them because they couldn't see around their dumb signs.
Yeah.
I got a quick question on your, you know, the jail stats here and stuff like that. Do you keep track? I mean, I'm guessing since there's more felonies, that the stay is longer. Is that correct, or am I wrong on that?
Pardon?
That the stay in the jail is longer per person than it used to be? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you keep track of that at all?
I, I keep track of that, but I don't put it on here, but it's something I can add to this.
I think it'd be a good idea to see, you know, the difference, because I'm guessing a misdemeanor is there for a short period of time and then they're done, but a felony, obviously, they're waiting for something that has to happen, whether in the court system or transportation.
A lot of times, they're, they're waiting, their trial, pre-trial is a lot longer, especially on the felony, you know, the misdemeanors move rather quickly.
Yeah.
But pre-trial now with, you know, the robberies and aggravated assaults and these home invasions, it's gonna, it's, yeah. But that is something I track, and I just don't put it on here, but I'll add that.
Is, would that, does that make any type of effect of, of, you know, looking into this, our jail expansion on how to, where you put felons and misdemeanors and the separation? Is that, is that going to come into effect on the design of your?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's, that's what I'm struggling with now, is that when you bring in five suspects or four suspects from the same crime and keep them separated, that's, that's what we're dealing with right now. And then we have one person that has an infectious disease, and so we have to put this person in a four-person cell by, by, but, so that, so I'm three-person down right off the bat, see? So that's why it's important in an expansion that I have some single cells, that if we have something, a health thing that we have to keep, you know, we won't, we won't tie up a, a four-man cell for one person. And so that's the things that we struggle with right now, is, is separation and, and, and I hope we can, once we, you know, today, we're now, we're going to open up our architect, I think there's eight, right? I think there's eight that were submitted, which is, is a nice number, I thought there was going to be more, to be honest, and we had a lot of interest in it, but there was eight, so. And we'll, we'll start that process today, at 1:30, so. But that's something, yeah, it's, there's definitely more, more, and as we're waiting to, but as I, as you approve the bills, you see what medical had cost us. A lot of these inmates are needy also, that are dealing with addictions and other things that we're having to address too, so it's spendy for us.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Dick?
Morning.
Good morning.
Well, a few things, I've got a lot of things later on in the agenda that if you want questions or comments, we'll do that. The new truck was delivered last week, we've been working on getting it road-ready and, and installing the light bar and radio and stuff. Fuel pump issue, we think we've got a solution to the problem, it's a rather spendy one, but the pump there is a little underrated, and so if we want to upgrade it, it'll be about $22,000. Then, last week, we met Misty and I and Tom at Pheasants Forever and talked about different things that we need to do to keep the habitat going on 34th Avenue down there from 213 up to 215, and I think it was worthwhile, and I think we got everything pretty well organized on who will take care of what. And other than that, we've just had normal maintenance. And if you have any questions, we should have everything, as far as the bridge stuff, everything should be as far as it can go. So.
Any questions for Dick?
All right, thanks. Misty?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I only have a couple of things this morning, County Road 11 with the cattails. I got ahold of the supervisor for the area fish, fishery and aquatic habitat. He refuses to give us a permit to spray them cattails, beans, the cattails do not impede the flow of water out of Lake Sineye. So, and anybody that's a landowner that has land along that outlet or along Lake Sineye can apply for a permit and they can spray themselves. So as of right now, we, we're, our hands are tied, they won't allow us to spray the cattails. If the cattails are in the ditch, we can go mow them down. That'd be the only other option.
But they're in the water, so they can't be mowed.
That's correct. Any other questions on that?
Okay, nope.
We discussed mosquito spraying at our board meeting yesterday afternoon. We come up with, and this is a long shot, but we have, what we're thinking is we charge $50 for an acreage to go in and spray somebody's acreage.
First, you might mention the grant.
Oh, the grant, my bad. Excuse me. We did receive a grant for $4,315, which will help with chemical costs, and that's what I put it down as when I filled out the grant, is it's chem, for chemical or equipment. And that'll cover the chemical, we do have some chemical left that needs to get used up before we purchase any new, right off the bat. And then where I'm going with this is acreages would be $50, an association like Lake Campbell, Sunnyview, North Grove would be about $100, per time, I'm thinking, would be the best. And then to prepay, just in case. That's, that's the best I can do, because I don't know how we can spray the whole county. There's no way, there's no way we can go down every county road.
When I saw the grant in, in here, I was, I was a little confused, because I thought we decided we weren't doing mosquito spraying because of the issue, we can't spray the whole county. But now we have these grant monies, and then entities or individuals can make application for some of the grant monies to have spraying done.
That's correct.
So do we have some criteria and application process?
Not for, not for the money, not for the grant money that the county has, that's for our use.
Okay. What are we spraying with that?
That's just what she said.
Just?
Acreages, individuals, what, what the Weed Board came up with yesterday, and to, to a recommendation for this board, was that if people called and wanted us to spray acreages, of course, depending on the size, you know, she, that she would have a set amount for that, she would have a set amount for individuals in housing developments, and then we, the way that we would let people know, would, we would have to advertise.
Right.
And they could call in if they were interested in having us spray.
And then we'll use the chemicals that we bought with this grant money to do the sprays?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so if we spray, was it $4,100?
Forty-three.
Okay. If we spray $4,300 worth of stuff, we're done. Is that it, or?
Well, it, it depends, if we have to have, if, if we spray more, I would say probably then, and we run out of money for chemicals, then we may have to charge a little more, because the charge is going to be for the overtime for the guys that are spraying.
So that's what the, the funds are used to pay the overtime for the workers?
Right, and so if we run out of chemicals, which I don't think we will.
I don't think.
Then we might have to up that charge, but we would advertise that if that were the case. But I, I don't think that's going to happen.
And other counties around us do charge for mosquito spraying, it's a flat rate, $60.
I, I was just, what I was questioning is that we had said we weren't spraying, and now, now we are going to spray.
Well, we got the grant, so.
And so any, anybody living out in the county that would like to have the county spray can make application and, and we'll spray.
That's correct.
Okay.
I would like it to be prepaid though, just so we know that we've got the payment for it, and then once we receive the payment... And then once we receive the payment, we'll go out and spray.
How are we getting that word out to everybody?
We're gonna have to advertise it in the yellow paper.
Advertising.
All right, anything else? We have a scheduled nine o'clock here, so.
That's all I had.
Say yeah, okay. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a scheduled agenda item for 9:00 AM. Presentation from, by Randy Hanson of the Outdoor Adventure Center proposal. Randy, come on up. And I'll just kind of give a precursor here of what's kind of been going on to begin with here. Randy is a member of the OAC board and has approached me to ask if the county would be interested in potential use, partnership, purchase, open to options for the Outdoor Adventure Center. And so I told him that we, I would take kind of a straw poll with the commissioners to see if there's interest in that. And so, and there was. And so Randy had gotten us some information and we've looked at that on executive session. And there's enough interest from the commission to bring this forward and, and listen to your proposal. And so we're here today for you to do that. And just everybody needs to understand that this is potential contract negotiations and contract negotiations happen in executive session. So we won't be discussing, you know, actual contract terms or anything like that. We'll listen to the OAC's proposal. Sure, there'll be some questions and we'll, we'll put a game plan together after that if we feel there's warranted to proceed. So any questions on that? So, all right, yours, Randy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner and, and County Commission for allowing me to come forward. My name is Randy Hanson. I am the current president of the Outdoor Adventure Center Board. And on my left is Lisa Brett. She is the Executive Director of the Outdoor Adventure Center. So I'll have some opening comments and then I'll turn the mic over to Lisa for a few words and then we'll open it up to questions. So, thank you, Ryan, for that summary. It brings you up to the point of where we are coming forward and looking for partners to help us keep the Outdoor Adventure Center going strongly and to actually expand its offerings. And so it became apparent when we looked at potential partners that the county would be the best one for the Outdoor Adventure Center. And what I would like you to consider is a purchase of the Outdoor Adventure Center for a value that is, looks real good on, on books. And of course, the county isn't really about making your financial statement look great, but from any business sense and standpoint, this is a great value to the county. And we can talk about that more in executive session. The other thing that I want to mention is that we would in turn, if you buy the Outdoor Adventure Center, offer to manage it for you. Because I don't think you're interested in adding staff and adding manpower and adding responsibilities to anyone's plate. And we would offer those services as an existing board and existing staff to manage the facility in full for you as the county and owner of the building. Of course, that, the devil is in the details and there would be a management agreement that we would be working on. And we would offer to bring that forward. And of course, you would be able to review it, amend it, and jointly we would come up with an agreement that works for everyone. So how that might work is as far as the facility and management, I would foresee a joint board that would have whoever we decide as the best people to sit on that board. Obviously, all of the entities that would occupy the building, that would be 4H. That would be the county oversight on the commission level. That would be the Outdoor Adventure Center Board and the Executive Director of both the 4H and of the Outdoor Adventure Center would make sense. And so that's how I think we could sub-manage that and make sure that everything is being accomplished that we set as goals to accomplish there. So with that, I want to just have Lisa say a few words and then I want to take the mic back and kind of close before questions.
Good morning, everyone. Just to kind of dovetail off of what Randy has said, we are very, very excited about this opportunity to partner with the county to further the parallel programming that is going on in 4H and with the county kids in addition to what we already do at the OAC. I believe, just to kind of catch up on a little bit of history, when this building was first put together, the people that were involved in this were sitting in somebody's kitchen and they were lamenting about how there was no place to shoot archery in Brookings. These people were 4H people. They had been affiliated with 4H for years and thought that this would be something that would further 4H as well as the sport of archery in, in the region. And so from that and from those initial conversations at somebody's kitchen table, the OAC was born. It went from, I believe, a, you know, a Morton building with some concrete, maybe some heat, to a facility that was community-built. The people that were involved in this went out to the community and, and talked to a lot of donors and potential donors to make sure that this was a community effort. And so we have furthered that in a time that we've been open with not only having some programming available for 4H, but also for a lot of other youth groups in our community, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and the Brookings Youth Mentoring Group, Gap, Boys and Girls Club. I mean, we're, we're, we've gone in that same parallel programming viewpoint that 4H has gone in for years, for decades. So we think that this is gonna be a fabulous fit. It's an opportunity for the Outdoor Adventure Center to help the county by giving 4H a permanent home. And it's an opportunity for the county to help us with maintaining a community resource that everybody wants to have here. So we're, we're really, really excited about it. We've talked to our members, we've talked to the public, we've talked to our, our committees and our boards and everybody is very anxious to see how this could go. And also to make sure that everyone wins, which is what we all want. And to also make sure that the community resource that everybody was so involved in getting off the ground remains viable and remains directed towards what we all want, which is growth of recreational sports in Brookings and growth of youth programming. You know, there's a lot of organizations in Brookings that do a little bit of youth programming, but nobody does what we do and nobody does what 4H does. So we think that this is a fabulous opportunity to get those two things accomplished in a, in a very good way. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
That's good.
Okay, so back to me, just a few other short comments. And that would be when I first met with you guys. I'm very active in the Brookings community from a lot of different perspectives, whether it's the Chamber, BEDC, SDEC, OAC. I'll go on with the acronyms. But one of the things I talked about is this could be a win-win-win. Well, once I kind of put it to paper and thought it through, I have to bring out the calculus that I had. It's actually a win to the fifth power. And so let me go through some of those wins. The city gets the current county resource space at the Swiftel that they desperately need. That's a win for the city. You sell that to them and they get that space. They can expand their offerings at the Swiftel and they desperately need that space. The county gets a permanent home for 4H, like Lisa already mentioned. And the many offerings for county residents. So it's, it's not just 4H, but it's, almost everybody that uses that facility is, is in the county of Brookings. We get a lot of people coming in, traveling and using it, but the largest percentage is Brookings residents. That's a win. The Outdoor Adventure Center gets to continue what it is doing, actually expand programming and expand the number of members and users. And the city and county get to help businesses accomplish the goal of expanding our workforce by offering the OAC as another amenity which attracts workers and helps retain the existing workers. We all know that's like the number one goal of the BEDC right now and should be of everyone. We do not have enough workers. We are not keeping the workers that we have sometimes. This facility helps that. And then 4H. It will be the premier 4H facility that I can think of or know about. Now granted, I'll give you that we can't have the cows and sows there or the equine, but other things can be done to accomplish that side and I'll leave that up to you. But all, almost all other 4H offerings can either be enhanced or new offerings can be expanded. And now they have their permanent home. Back, when I look back in the timeline, in January of '09, I approached the county commission for the first time. '09, seven and a half years ago. And I don't think any of you were on that board at that time. So there was this concept. And then through the years, I approached the county on a number of other occasions to have you be financial investors to help the OAC. And the timing just wasn't right. Things weren't right. You wouldn't have owned the building. And so that was part of the rub is that 4H wouldn't have a permanent home. They wouldn't own the building. Well, now here we are today. This is your opportunity. You can have a premier facility for an amazing price and we can accomplish all these wins together. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. Questions?
One of the things I know that the three of you met with the Extension Board and I've, I've talked with some of the people on Extension and I think there's an interest in having a tour of the facility, which would maybe include the county commission and the Extension Board and any other people that might be interested in seeing what's out there. Is there a way we could, we could get that scheduled?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. We just gotta try to find a date here that we can accommodate everybody and then make sure it's available for, for everybody here, so.
I know next week Sonia will be gone from Monday to Wednesday for the State 4H show. So she will be out of town in that time period.
Would the morning of the 21st, Thursday?
Is that when Sonia's going to be gone?
She'll be back Wednesday, right? Would that?
That works for us.
For you and I don't know.
What time are you thinking, Ryan?
I'm flexible, I guess, you know, is it 9:00, 10:00, 11:00?
I have something at 9:00. I'd like to be there for the tour. I have something at 9:00 I can't reschedule, but anytime after that in the morning would be fine. Like 10 o'clock would be good.
10 o'clock? 10 o'clock on the 21st?
Sonia, does that work with you?
And then, you know, we've extended invitation to all the Extension Board members to join us and anybody else, you know, all the 4H, anybody else involved would like to take a look and can open to the public if they want to too. If you're okay with that, I'll.
Absolutely.
Yes.
We give tours all the time.
Yeah.
Every day.
Sonia, is it possible for you to get the word out to the 4H leaders themselves that we're going to do that?
Whether on the board or not, I guess, you know, so. Okay, let's look at 10 o'clock on Thursday, 21st for a tour, so. You know, obviously, you know, you brought up the Resource Center that we have currently. And so we would need to do something with that. And that means we need to discuss this with the city and see if they're interested. Initial discussions, they are, but we're gonna have to hammer out a few things there with them to make sure this works for everybody. So, you know, I guess we'll discuss that and see if we want to do that. But initial expectations are that we would probably send a letter of intent to the city to see if they're interested and see if we can work some, some terms out for that, so. But that would definitely be, have to be a consideration before we do anything with, with this is the Resource Center and where we're at with that. And so, and so, but your initial is to, to purchase, correct?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And so then, right now, the city owns the land underneath, correct?
Correct. 99-year lease.
Okay.
3.8 acres.
Gotcha, okay. And so if we were to purchase, we would purchase the improvement on top of that lease and then have to figure out to make sure that we would inherit that lease to keep that from the city? Or if we negotiate with the city to purchase land and that kind of stuff, which is kind of something I think is a, is a definite want and.
Absolutely. The land comes with her. I'm not, I'm not in.
Okay, well, that will have to, we'll have to work that with the, the city. But that's what I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page on that. That right now, you don't own the land under it.
We do not. It's a 99-year lease.
Yeah.
Paid in full.
So we'll need to make sure that that is, is arranged and figured out before we continue on in that type of stuff too, so. So now, one of the things too is, is do you have any responsibilities to donors, to other people that? And one of the questions that came up too with Extension was are we allowed to put a sign up? Can we, you know, put our symbol up? Can we put the 4H symbol on the, there, you know, any of those types of things? Just, you know, and those can be talked about a little bit too, but I just didn't know if you knew a little bit about that at all.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question because part of, on our side, the purchase agreement would be that we honor the donors' requests for naming rights. Those people gave to the facility, you know, and part of the reason that they did that was that they got some benefit back. So the largest anonymous donor asked to name the facility the Outdoor Adventure Center. Now, as far as the 4H emblem, anything else that, that you might want to add to that building? As long as we don't change the name without permission, I don't see an issue with that. And so Easton has the archery range. They've named the archery range. Some of the donors gave large enough amounts that they had memberships that are perpetual, things of that nature that we would ask you to honor. And also the current members that are paid and are able to use the facility. Game Fish and Parks is a big partner and they want open hours to the ranges and things like that. And so those are all agreements that are in place that we would ask you to honor. And I see no reason why you would not want to. Short of adding maybe Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center or something like that, we would just go to that largest donor and ask if that would be okay. And otherwise, thank you for asking that. Yeah, we do want to honor those people that gave large enough sums to get those naming rights.
So there are two naming rights, the building and the archery center. Were there any besides that?
There's multiple agreements, but as far as naming, it was just the building and then the Easton Archery.
We'll need to probably see all those agreements to make sure that we can not, we can do our projects there and not infringe on agreement that you've already made for that. So we're gonna make sure those work.
Sure.
Together.
Yeah. And we can notify upon your saying, yeah, let's take the next step. If, if this is the notification, we could, we could actually pull those agreements and start to look at those and, and let some, some donors know that this is happening. We've already sort of discussed it with Game Fish and Parks and they're fine.
Okay, I guess I got another quick question here. You talked about a management agreement in there and I guess, and you talked about a joint board. So you have an Outdoor Adventure Board already, correct?
Correct.
And so Brookings County would own it, the building, but we would enter into a contract with your board that would manage the facility. You would, you know, continue to do the program that you're doing, expand it, charge for those to try to pay bills and to make sure that you come out, you know, in the, in the black every year. And then, so you'd have that board. And then your vision and a board that we would put together that would manage the facility as a whole. So 4H members on there, 4H Executive Director, Executive Director of the OAC, board members of the OAC on a joint board, commissioners on a joint board that would then manage the whole facility.
Yeah, maybe a member-at-large that just happens to be a part of the OAC. And, yeah, so we kind of get this equal representation of all parties. And, and that would be a 10,000-foot level board that is not micromanaging every little detail that's going on, but they are the ones that say, maybe deal with issues that may arise and also set policy for how things are operated and oversee how we're managing the facility, that sort of thing.
Okay. Now, it's something that us as, kind of, commission could probably put together since, you know, in the end, it's, it's our building, if that's what it turns out to be. But, you know, the management option of it there, because I, I guess I don't want. But, you know, the management option of it there, because I, I guess I don't want to, you have a beautiful building here, but it's big and it's large. And the full use is on a daily use, not on a limited use. And so I'd like to, you know, see somebody using it and for all the residents of Brookings County too. But we do want a permanent home for 4H and, and a facility that can, can be, be used. So, okay, so we'd have to, we're going to work out a management issue deal and stuff like that to make sure that, that can, that can work out. Stuff too, so, yeah.
What, one of the questions that I have is, is where I, and, and I am supportive of this proposal. I just want to say that, I think you know that. But there's a potential for some disagreement between 4H shooting sports and OAC scheduling. And I'm curious whether, do you keep any kind of statistics or surveys that, that track the numbers of people using the pistol range at different times of the day, different times of the week? So that for planning purposes, that can be looked at to see how those two groups will be able to mesh together? Did that make sense, my question?
Yeah, it does. I'm just going to in general say something and then I think I'll turn it over to Lisa. But just in general, Ian, the way we envision this and the way we operate now is there's a master schedule. And so people are going to have to be on that master schedule, no matter what the organization is. And then once those commitments are made, those commitments are held. Even if some better event comes along, those commitments are made with 4H, those commitments are held. And so in regard to specific use of the pistol range and statistics, I'll divert.
And let me maybe clarify my question a little bit before Lisa answers. I'm a member of the OAC myself and, and can come shoot whenever the facility is open because it's open to the public. And, and I'm just curious, you know, sometimes there are a lot of people there and sometimes there's not a lot of people there when we go out. And I was just wondering if you know from any records that you're currently keeping or if that's something you could start tracking for planning purposes? The highs and the lows and particularly on weekends?
Yeah, we actually are tracking it already. We have found, and, and when I started working there, Ian, that's one of the stats that I wanted to see right away. Really what's going on in those ranges? Who's doing what, when? And so we have found through the stats that we've been keeping and through our, our card swipes and all of the things, the access to the building. The busy time of year for our facility is from the first part of November until the end of April, second week of May-ish. Those are, that's the busiest time of the year for the facility use. And in the gun range specifically, because of the weather, people come in to shoot then. So during nice weather, everybody's outside. You know, they're at grandma's farm shooting in a bale of hay or whatever. But during the colder times of year, everybody comes in to shoot. And so our busiest days of the week are normally Thursday evenings, all day Saturday, and a small portion of Sunday are the normally the most busiest days of the week. And I, I want to, now I want to predicate that statement by saying that those are the public shooting times that we're the busiest. We also are very busy on Monday and Tuesday nights in the gun range from, again, last part of October, beginning of November, clear up through the end of spring because we run leagues and we have specialized shooting events. And those, those specialty events crowd up the ranges, both of them. So those are the nights, the, the days that the gun ranges are usual, is usually the most crowded. Weekends, of course, are busy because people, we aren't even open during the day during the week, except on Friday. Friday, we're opening, we open at noon. But everybody's at work, so we don't have a reason to be open in the gun range. Nobody's, nobody's available to shoot. So Saturday is the big day. And so that's, that's very much the busiest day of the range is that day. Thursday nights are always very busy also, for some reason, I don't know why. But they just are. So, yeah, we've been keeping those stats since I walked through the door.
Are you seeing 4H kids participating in those leagues or are those all adults or what?
At this point, the, in the gun range, the, we have three leagues that go on in there and all of them are adult. We haven't had anybody ask for youth leagues in there. Now, we do have times that those, that the, specifically, and I'm still talking about the gun range here, not the archery range. We do have times that the gun range is unoccupied that we could have youth shooting leagues in there. Just nobody's ever asked us to do that, so we haven't done it.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? All right, well, thank you for coming and we have some things to discuss, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we have Department head reports, Mike. Sorry I didn't get to you before nine o'clock, but come on up and... Am I missing anybody else?
Yeah, okay, okay. Good morning. Mine shouldn't be very long. Seems like traffic's down a little bit. In the last two weeks, we had only 92 phone calls coming in, maybe 7 out. 20 veterans stopped by and 22 stopped by on the welfare side. So that's, that's down about 20 calls probably on each side in the last two weeks. So hopefully it's lightening up a little bit. And as you can see on our, our report, we had less people coming in and, and stuff. So that's kind of a positive note, but I think that might just be one of those summer, summer statistics and stuff. The only other thing I have going is that tomorrow I'll be going down to Sioux Falls and meeting with the Veterans Council and advocating for one of our citizens of, of Brookings County to be named Veteran of the Year. And I got the stuff from Bob. Unfortunately, he's gone, otherwise we'd have tag teamed him. But I do know there's a couple of other people that are up in the running, but I think our, our individual's probably well worth noting for all the accomplishments he's done for veterans. And that's all I have.
Mr. Chair? Were you going to ask him a question? I'm sorry. If you have a question, that's first, but after that, point of privilege, could we take a minute?
Just do the question here first and then...
Mike, did I read properly that we paid an insurance premium?
Yes, we did.
When did we, have we always?
We've, we've always done that because in this particular case, this person is ill, okay? And if they go off of their insurance, they meet the criteria where the county could be held liable for it. And in a case like that, we're probably looking at 10, that's probably a catastrophic one.
Okay.
So instead of, you know, saying, great, you know, you're, you're in treatment, it meets our criteria and it's emergency condition, we would, would pick it up, so.
So we could be paying that for a while, but you...
No, no, we're actually not going to be on this particular case because, because the issue is, it was just that one month period that she had missed.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that particular one, in my opinion, otherwise I wouldn't have suggested it, but I think that was some well-spent money.
All right. Very good, thank you.
And it is in there. One of the things that, and I'm glad you asked that, I'm sorry I don't want to, but I'm glad you asked that because some of the people that may find that they're unable to make their premiums, right? Especially with the ACA, the Affordable Care Act. I think it would be to our advantage to make those premiums because, you know, we're looking at 20, as low as $20 for some of these premiums. And, and this particular one happened to be 300. She didn't fall under 500. But, you know, if that's going to save us $10,000, then I'm, I'm a big fan of it.
Okay. That answers.
All right.
I was just asking if we could take a break.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we can do that. Are you, everything? Or do you have a question?
I was just going to say, I see the Veterans Office on campus is all functional now and...
I, I know they're moving over and I haven't been up to their new facility yet. Sounds like it should be pretty good. Couple of weeks ago, I know that they were still renovating in Brown Hall. So it'll kind of put it together and I think it'll be a big improvement.
I've seen the article in the paper, so.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
All right, Steph, Stephanie? Yeah. Sounds like there's 22 teams or something we're talking about in that 130 group? Oh, wow. So it's going to be slow going, isn't it? Yeah, yeah. All right, we'll reconvene here and Sonia, would you like to have an update there?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll just give you a quick update on June because it's gone and it was fast and furious. We had 4H members that were active at 4H camp the first week in June. We have held our special foods contest. We had 20 kids make recipes and the quality of recipes that those 20 kids put out was pretty impressive. You'd really like to be invited to any one of their homes to eat. There was only two kids that made smoothies and that's a classic recipe for a beginner, eight, nine, and 10-year-old. And to see that there was 20 kids and most of them falling in that beginner, junior age and to see only two smoothies, that's, that's kind of a big deal. We had our horse show in June. We had about 20 kids that participated. It was, happened to be the day of your last budget meeting. And the state horse show begins next week and I'm not actually sure how many kids we have going, but that's in here on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I think there's some events yet on Thursday, but a majority of them are within those three days. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I think there's some events yet on Thursday, but a majority of them are within those three days. The month concluded with five of Brookings County's sharpest shooters going to the National 4-H Shoot in Grand Island, Nebraska. And they did well. Personally, they did well as a state. South Dakota had a good representation on the podium. And from what the field specialist Kathy Reeves of Rapid City said of the South Dakota youth, they were one of the most respectful group of kids she had ever had the privilege of accompanying to Grand Island. And I think would take the whole bunch, including coaches and volunteers back. And we did have a couple that went along as, kind of as, um, coaches and volunteers as well. Our summer shooting sports in Brookings County is in the swing of things. We have shotgun and we have muzzle loading. The shotgun kids have some new faces this year. They shoot out, uh, the gun club out west, east on Highway 14 because of the new target shooting program that they did in the high school this year. And it also has then brought about a couple new volunteers. So that's good to see that we've got some overflow from one to the next and some continued excitement. In fact, shotgun started like the 6th of June and they still hadn't had their state shoot for the high school competition, so. And they were just coming right off one end to the other. We should see some, uh, good scores, I think, out of those 20-plus kids that we have shooting out there. The 4-H Leaders Association had a successful pork booth at the Arts in the Park. Even though it was a little soggy on Sunday, they still made a lot of sandwiches and had a, had a good event. From a programming perspective, I did start some gardening program with two gap locations here in Brookings in April. It was a 10-week gardening deal and we utilized some beds that were available at those two sites, Hillcrest, I'm sorry, Midary School and Camelot. And they're still maintaining those gardens, but before we were done, they were able to pick radishes. And they had tried radishes earlier on in that 10-week period and thought that the radishes they grew were quite hot. So, we'll see how the rest of it turns out. July is, um, this week is just kind of a week to get some things taken care of for Achievement Days because, like I said, next week is Horse Show. And the last week in June is busy with the Dog Show, uh, the Fashion Review Contest and Public Presentations. All taking place the week prior to Achievement Days and then Achievement Day setup will take place the end of the week and Achievement Day starts on August 1st. We look forward to seeing you at the barbecue, if not before. And 4-H will also be taking over the radio stations on next Thursday, uh, um, July 21, from 9:00 to 11:00. So we'll have those 4-Hers live on the air with those radio personalities as well as coming in this week to record ads for the sponsors. So if you're tuned into 102.3 and 910, The Ranch, is that 910? You might be able to hear some of the things that they have to say. Questions of me from what I've just said?
When is the barbecue?
Uh, Thursday night, August 4th, 5:00 to 7:00. We're hoping there's no torrential rainfall or storms that force us into the hallways of the Swiftel Center and home for cleanup. It's done.
Okay, anything else?
Um, so I will share with the 4-H leaders and, uh, Extension Board members the scheduled tour for Thursday. Just to make sure I wrote it down correctly, 10:00 AM, meet at the OAC, correct?
Yep.
In light of that and this morning's information, Commissioner Miller, would you wish that we tried to schedule an Extension Board meeting sometime following that? Is that, uh, you know, I don't know where, what role you'd like the Extension Board to play in some of these conversations, but if I can be of assistance in getting something scheduled in the next couple of weeks, knowing that we need some time to combine schedules with everybody, please let me know. Or let the office know so somebody can start, um, doing some of that in lieu of my absence for horse show, et cetera.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you, I just had a quick question. Are there any parents that would be interested, 4-H kid parents that would be interested in the tour? Are there people in that group that we should also invite?
Yeah, I thought that I might just, I've been sending a weekly email, this is what's happening in Brookings County 4-H and I, I thought I would just include that in there and invite anybody that might be interested in participating in that to feel welcome.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bev? Hi.
Morning. To be very truthful, I came mostly to listen to the 4-H stuff because as a 4-H parent and a future, um, leader of our 4-H group, I'm quite interested in that. But, um, on the other hand, for the office, in June, I believe I told you that we had a quite busy first week. It continued. We had the largest month since I took office for, um, revenue in our office, over $51,000.
Wow.
So that was, um, and if July continues as this first part of July is, it's going to be big too because we have been very busy in the office. So that's, that's good to, um, good to see, actually, with the economy and, and everything going, with the real estate selling and transactions and things like that. As far as Doc Pro, we've been, um, having the teleconference every two weeks on Wednesday. It's again tomorrow and that's been helpful. It keeps us kind of in the loop of what's, what's going on. In our agreement, or, um, there was budgeted or whatever, uh, conversion for poor liens, which now they tell me that Tyler does not convert poor liens. So there has to be an amendment and the original agreement was signed by the chair, so I need to have, um, Ryan sign that, um, uh, amendment. And to me, that's, it's okay that they don't convert the poor liens because the other offices and, and our office, we have to see how it would work for Brookings County. And, um, we'll just work with it. So it's $1,400. It'll be less on, on the, uh, amount of the cost of Doc Pro.
Bev, they don't convert, but they do, the software will handle on, in the future?
Yes, yes. Um, I think possibly that they don't convert because INCODE really doesn't have, it's not really a poor lien program. It's in the accounts receivable and we've made it work that way. Um, so I, it's unusual to have a, a program for poor liens or county liens. And, um, that I believe is the reason why they don't do an actual conversion or have that in there.
I don't know if you have this, I think Mike might be the person I should be asking this question. But the poor liens that we have that would still be effective, do we have an idea on how many of those are out there? If we were going to, um, have those entered into the program because we would be able to enter ourselves later if we wanted, right? What are we talking about in numbers? Any idea?
I have no idea. Um, it, I just had Finance Office run a report off of, of the, uh, off of the poor liens yesterday. I, and it came up to like 130 pages of, of names, but I, truthfully, I had, I didn't count how many, you know, or figure it out.
130 pages of names?
Mm-hmm.
And that's not an undoable number. And that would cover everything that we've got that's still, um...
That's still, that's still active, yes, yes. And of course, they're being added to all the time, but...
Right.
If you give me just a second here, I think I can...
Yeah, we track that and it's in your monthly, you know, the total amount.
The total is?
It doesn't have the number of people, but if she finds it.
Well, I think it has a number of files, which would give us kind of an idea. I'm...
I just think it's important eventually we have them all online and that maybe one of the things we think about a year from now, once we have Doc Pro up and running, is maybe having a summer student or somebody where we spend a little money to have those entered into the software program. That's just something to, we, we don't have to talk about it now, but I, I do think to have us all up to speed, they need to be entered, but I, I understand why they can't convert those.
I, yes, I've, I didn't have a problem with that either. I could quite understand that, so. That's about all I've got.
Okay, any questions for Bev?
The report in front of you lists off totals for the liens that we have and then for, just under county liens, which includes court-appointed, it includes the care for, um, just over, there's like 60, 61, 40, 6,143 accounts. So I'm not sure, you know, if you kind of go off percentages, you know, 2.2 million of the 5.7, so about half, almost half is, um, care for. So I'm guessing there's between 2,500 to 3,000 files, maybe, if I was just kind of going off averages.
I think that's a very good educated guess on that. Just by the, we, we still keep the cards too because, um, they are open for the banks and stuff to, and it's just easier for them to look at and I'm, I think that that's a very good estimation.
All right. Thanks, Bev.
All right, we'll move on to regular business. Letter A, action to approve abatement 16-008, an abatement request made by the City of Sinai for parcel number 35100-00400-010-00 and the amount of $14.76 for 2015 and $14.74 estimate for 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
This is just a little bit of an unusual one that, it happened quite a while ago. The City of Sinai took over the property. I don't know what happened. Our office erred in changing it to an exempt classification, so it was generated. They are not actually applying. I'm applying for this abatement on their behalf. That's why I've signed it. Um, and it's a little bit unusual and I've put into 2016, the taxes are not due yet. They're not due and payable until 17, but I talked with Vicky about this and said if we could get the board to just approve it and that's why it's estimated because I don't know the levies yet. Um, but if she's got it, it alleviates us having to do this again next year because it's not going to change in status, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Chris. Letter B, an action to prove Resolution 16-21, a resolution placing taxes on an uncollectible list. Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Vicky?
Um, you should have received, um, the actual, um, list of uncollectible mobile homes. And there's, um, five of them on the list. And those are something we have every year. And if we put them on an uncollectible list, if there's ever a time that, um, we can collect, we can put them back on the tax rolls and collect them. And out of like 140 mobile homes, this is what we had that were uncollectible. And also the Sheriff's Office sold two mobile homes and that's on your staff report there. One brought $636.90 and one brought 346.05. So that, all that's really gonna take care of is the advertising, all the taxes and that type of thing, so we aren't making any money, but it will take care of, to bring the taxes current and also the advertising of those, so.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks.
Yep. Letter C, an action to approve Resolution 16-22, a resolution to continue to support for the First District Association of Local Governments during fiscal year 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Stacy, any comments on this?
This is an annual resolution that we approve. Um, the funding that you see, the $41,643.83 is what is in the 2017 budget. So that, that, that specific amount has been budgeted for First District for next year, so. This is just the resolution that they, they need from us to approve that.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, an action to approve Agreement 16-48, Amendment Number 1 to the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management, 2016 Emergency Management Performance Grant Sub-Award Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. On this, any questions? Doc, some, um, help us on this case?
This is for, um, the salaries for Bob's, the emergency management position, our grant agreement that we get some reimbursement back for some of Bob's emergency management, um, salary.
Okay, any just question, any more further discussion on this? I'm assuming Bob's, is, okay with this. Obviously, he's not here and he's looked at it and is good with it.
Yeah, yeah, he was the one who brought this to be approved.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, an action to approve Agreement 16-49, Agreement between Brookings County and South Dakota Department of Health, Division of Health Systems Development Regulation for Enhancing Mosquito Control Efforts.
So move.
Second.
Second, okay, discussion.
This is the grant that Misty spoke of earlier. Um, this is the grant agreement that we'd signed with Department of Health.
What, what happens if we exceed this grant? Money? We get more requests and...
That, we have control over that. We're gonna have to make a decision at that time.
Do we do it at that time or do we put that on the application that...
Well, we could put that on the application, in the ad that we send out.
I think maybe we should just include that so people know we've got this much money. When it's gone, we're done unless we do a supplement to the budget for it.
Or they want to pay.
Because typically this spring is done in the evening, which all the hours will be overtime hours.
Yes.
So I mean, it's definitely realistic for a charge, you know, to, for the time and that kind of stuff.
This is, is for the chemicals, the, the grant is only for the chemicals. So what the individuals are paying for are the, the manpower.
Are we gonna use any of this, and I don't know if, you probably have, since Misty had to leave here, are we using any of this at all to spray areas for us, for the county that we see in need? You know, that we identify as a spot down the road that has a problem or an issue that we could say, okay, we can go and do this as, for, by the county?
Well, we can't. We can make applications just like anybody else.
So we would make an application to ourselves to, to use some of the funds to that. Do we need to?
No, we can't use the funds. I mean, that's only for chemical.
Right, that's what I mean though. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, is this just for people to apply for and there's a certain amount, or is this for actual, for us as a county, as our weed board to use to spray for mosquitoes if we feel a need to?
Wasn't that what you were trying to get away from? Is the county picking and choosing areas in which to spray? So if someone makes a specific application and they're willing to pay for the hours, I think you do it.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. So if, if nobody makes application, we don't use the grant?
I don't think that's gonna be...
I don't think that's gonna be the problem. I just, I'm...
I guess I would caution, I think that's what the, that the...
We were, we were trying.
Trying to get away from is the county picking and choosing which places are the most important to spray. That's why people are, who are willing to provide the funding for the, the employees' overtime hours. And then with the grant dollars that we have now, the ability to at least provide that service to people who also want to partner with the county, instead of the county saying...
We're gonna spray here, here.
We're gonna spray here, here, yeah.
Right.
But do we have any county property that we would want sprayed? Yeah, I'm trying to think if there is any such thing, but is there any county property that we would want? Because I don't think we should have to apply if we want to use some of that chemical on county-owned property.
The whole county is county property.
Well, no, because the...
It's private.
Yeah, the people have property titled in their name. Is there any property that's titled in the county's name that we would want to spray? That was my question. I can't think of something right off the top of my head, but...
So, I guess I just didn't, I mean, is this just identified for people that want to have an application, to have it in the county sprayed, and there's a fee, and if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used?
That's the intent of the weed board, I believe.
Okay, that's, and so if there comes a piece of property that the county owns, that would be need to, that, that we would have to make basically a request to the weed board to spray that county piece of property. I just, I'm just seeing if there's a, you know, we have a lot of standing water now, and we have areas of lower that will have potential for more intense mosquito reproduction and stuff like that.
Here, I can add, I can add to this. We did discuss the fact that there was standing water. And we have briquettes that can be put into that standing water to get the larva, which is the best way to handle that. And so, we also instructed Misty to purchase more of the briquettes so that we can throw into the standing water. So, they know better than anybody, because they're out in the county. They know exactly where that all is.
So do people ask for those briquettes, or we do that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not something that anybody...
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, discussion and possible action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty, a letter of contract feasibility services for two thousand thirteen, excuse me, two hundred and thirteenth street, from Thirty-Fourth Avenue South to Novita, between Brookings County and Banner and Associates, Inc.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion.
I'm, I have a question on the length of time that they have in this contract for the services to be done. And they, they have a hundred and eighty days in there. Is a hundred and eighty days required? Could we decrease that period of time? That's a long time to get this preliminary information back that we need before we can make some decisions.
I think, Leanne, when you added in all the hydrology study and the more involved HECA study, that just can't be done any quicker. I don't know. All I asked them to do is put together an agreement, so if you're... If you don't, I, I turn it down if you don't think it would be...
Well, and I don't, I don't want to turn it down and make us take another month to, to get things moving. But I do think we could maybe ask that question. Could they do it in a hundred and twenty days? That just seems like six months to get done what is this preliminary beginning stuff is a long time.
So, six months from now basically is the end of the year.
Right.
You know, if we ask for four months.
Right. It would be from whenever you sign this, if you want a contract with them. So I'd have to get back to them, ask them if they would shorten that at all. I never asked them that.
To expedite things, if you tabled it for right now and kept going, Dick or I could go call Brad Wormers and see if he's available, and if he would agree to a four months, you could just amend it here and have it done today.
Fantastic. I'd move to table.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Okay. Further discussion on the motion to table?
Dick, do you feel this, there's be enough in here, we can make a good decision on if to do some maintenance out there, you know, in the future, or...
Well, we're planning it, we take care of it, just like it's our road. But what this study will basically tell you is the sub-soil structure, because they'll be doing borings, they'll base their study and proposals on what Geotex, you know, results come back as. And, but I don't think it will have any earth-shaking, you know, if you're not willing to buy more right-of-way, or if you're not, you know, I, I think the, it's very wise to do this upfront, because it, it could be an extremely involved project with the hydraulics. So, that's, I think it will give us everything we need, Larry, to pay...
But I, like you said, you want to ma, you're going to continue to maintain it, and I don't want to postpone any maintenance. If you want to haul extra gravel out or anything to keep this in good shape.
Yeah, yeah.
Good question. Okay, motion to table and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Letter G, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-one, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Marion Russe?
Russ.
Russ?
Russ. Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. And Dick, these are all...
Yeah, these are all the ones for the highway project on twenty-five. These have to be signed and in before, realistically, before they send the notice to proceed, but I think they've already sent the notice to proceed.
Okay.
So.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-two, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and David G. Burnt, at X, and Donna F. Burnt.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter I, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-three, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and David G. Burnt, at X, and Donna F. Burnt.
For motion.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter J, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-four, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and David G. Burnt, at X, and Donna F. Burnt.
Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter K, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-five, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and David G. Burnt, at X, and Donna F. Burnt.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter L, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-six, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter M, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-seven, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Quest Corporation, doing business at CenturyLink QC.
Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter N, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-eight, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Charles G. Short.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
This is, this is a different structure. This is a structure under twenty feet that will be done on Highway forty-six this summer with the other two box culverts.
Which highway did you say?
Highway forty-six.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter O, action to approve agreement sixteen dash fifty-nine, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter P, an action to approve agreement sixteen dash sixteen, agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation from, between Brookings County and Midary Creek LLP.
Look for a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Same structure on forty-six.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter Q, action to approve agreement sixteen dash sixty-one, agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Midary Creek LLP.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I think, I guess I'd ask Abby's advice, but Michelle, I believe, misunderstood me. These are duplications.
That's what I was wondering.
And what we really needed was one signed, and then I mailed back a signed copy to the landowner. So, basically, she listed them all separately. This one and the one prior went together, and, and I believe if you look up at the others, there's some duplication there, too.
That's what I was wondering, if they had splits right on the bridges, why you were...
Oh, no, they were just, hmm. The, the one for Burns, however, there's two separate tracts of land on that one, so that one is correct. But not, not the one for, like this one for Al Curtinbach, there's two of them.
Okay, so how do you want to handle that?
Well, you've already approved them at this point. Essentially, you're just approving duplicate originals. I would just keep going, finish it, and then we will clear up what needs to be sent in.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter R, action to approve agreement sixteen dash sixty-two, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Marion J. Russ.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, if you wanted to go back to that banner issue, I had a chance to have a visit with Brad Wormers on the phone briefly and explain the concern from the commission, and he said he thought four months would be no problem, if that was, that was the timeframe I heard you guys mention, so that's what I suggested. He said if we wanted to approve it today, and we would just amend the hundred and eighty days to a hundred and twenty days, and then as long as we send over a copy, so that they know that's what we've changed, he said. He made the statement to me that that would not be a problem.
Okay. Any motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor of removing it from the table, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, on the table, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion?
Do you want...
A motion to amend? Yep.
I would make a motion to amend the time period from a hundred and eighty days to a hundred and twenty days.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second. Discussion on the amendment. Hearing none, please call the roll on the amendment.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Amendment carries.
Okay, we have amended motion on the table, and any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Number nine, Commission Department Director Report.
I think we've discussed in the past that we have the Brookings Health System Board of Trustees position now that is going to be open effective the end of this month. We are receiving applications, I think through today, and that will be on your July nineteenth, next Tuesday's, agenda for approval, so we will have that position filled for them before the end of the month, so that that next person can start at the August meeting right away. So, that's...
And that, and that position will fill the position that will then end at the end of the year, correct?
Yes, this will be a position that Ms. Getting's position just was effective through, through the end of two thousand sixteen, so then this appointment will fill the remaining five months of this year, and then will be reopened for new applications once again, when we do all of our routine applications at the end of the year. We have received registration information now from, from the, or for the SDACC Fall Convention coming up. It's down in Sioux Falls, and it's just, it's just a two-day convention this year. I believe it starts on a Monday, and it goes to, through most of the day Tuesday. So it's, and since it's in Sioux Falls, you know, I think we could probably get away with one night of, you know, if anybody wants it. We did get some rooms down at the Sheridan where it will be held, it's at the convention center. So I guess I'm looking if anybody knows yet, they're looking for registration, RSVPs for that, so does anyone know now that they're going to attend that?
I'm going to attend, but I'm just going to drive back and forth, I'm not staying overnight.
Okay.
I'm going to attend.
Okay. Did you want a room down there?
Yes.
And that, that's the twelfth and the thirteenth, right?
Twelfth and thirteenth of September.
Okay. I'm going to try to attend, but I'm not sure staying overnight or not.
Okay.
That's, yeah, I may have to get back.
Just let me know, but as long as I know, I mean, what they're looking at now is if people are, you know, for the most part, just going, we have the rooms, and we can cancel and make adjustments to those at any time, so. But as soon as you know, let me know, and we'll get that taken care of. I included in my report also from SDACC, there's some election information that will be taking place at the Fall Convention in September. If you want to take a look at that, there's some positions open. If you want some more information, let me know. A couple other things that got handed out to you today. We received a notice of public hearing on a proposed gaming compact between the Flandre-Santee Sioux Tribe and the State of South Dakota. That's coming up July twenty-first at nine AM down in Moody County. I think that was just sent, just as an FYI more than anything. And the last thing that I have is, that got handed out, Commissioner Wyeth provided a, a commission report, and that's in front of you, too, since that's, that's next coming up. His report is in front of you. I think that's all I have, and I, I guess in, in upcoming dates, on Thursday, July twenty-first, that's turning into a very busy day. First District Association has their annual picnic. That's up at Memorial Park, kind of on the northwest side of Lake Kimpeska. Does any, if anyone is planning to attend, I can share RSVP for you for that, for their picnic that evening.
I, I think that I should go.
Okay.
RSVP to.
Okay. Harry, no?
Might still be in North Dakota.
Okay. That's all I have, unless you have any other questions for me.
I have a question. I got that email from Michelle about active shooter, city council, county commission. What's going on with that? We're doing something more or different, or what?
What they would like to do is try to get both the commission and the council together at the same time. What they would like to do is try to get both the commission and the council together at the same time. One of our local police officers would provide training for the boards here in this room, so if there is ever a situation during a meeting, and we thought it might be just easier just to get the groups together at the same time, so you're both hearing the same, the council and commissioner hearing the same information. That particular officer is on light duty work, I think through the end of August, if I, if I remember right. So they're looking at trying to schedule something before that person goes back on, on duty, so if you have some specific dates that you know would work, you can, you know, email Michelle back, and we'll try to get something worked out here in the next six weeks or so.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Deputy State's Attorney's report.
Just a couple of dates from my office, just continuing to work with Sean as we move towards a paperless office. It's something where we'll probably work to format all of the technology for the remainder of the year, make sure it's all up and running, and then with the hopes that by January first, if not sooner, we'd be able to kind of use that on a full-time basis while we're over in court. Pretty exciting with that. I would just echo what Sheriff Stanwick said, that we are busier than ever. I don't know if the community is growing or the climate of the community is changing, but as you read in the paper every day, our felony offenses, it's not just drugs anymore, it's pretty serious violent crimes, and it's all the more need for the conversations that we're having with the jail expansion. The other thing I would ask you to keep in mind, looking into this jail expansion conversation, is that while we have to often hold our violent felons in pre-trial detention for the public safety, a lot of the felons that we hold also are drug offenders that instead of going to the penitentiary, get local county time, and that's a number we're seeing consistently grow, so that's one that I don't think will change. But those are individuals that probably shouldn't necessarily be housed with some of our more violent offenders, so the dynamic is certainly changing, and we don't see the numbers going down anytime soon. Just to give you an idea, we hold a grand jury once a month, if not more often, and last month, I think we indicted twenty-four people, so those are new felony, serious offenses, that are not run-of-the-mill type crimes, so very busy. And then the other thing I would mention is we've had our first Brookings County Drug Court session. We have two participants in the program. Anybody is welcome to come watch anytime. It's a public court session. It's held at nine-thirty on Thursday mornings in the courthouse, and it's, it's pretty exciting, actually. It's, it's pretty promising to hear what these people have to say and to work with them through the process, and there's been changes over at the courthouse in terms of the Drug Court personnel, where they're housed at, so I would just encourage you to come over sometime or come watch a court session, and they're happy to have you.
If you know Abby, on, on those two people in Drug Court, what were the drugs, do you know? Are we talking meth, or are we talking something else?
Uh, one's main drug of choice was meth. The other one's current drug of choice is methadone. She'd been a heroin user that had basically gone to methadone, and that ended up being the drug of choice.
All right. Thank you. Excuse me, number eleven on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Leanne, should I start us off?
On June twenty-third, I attended the General Mills ribbon cutting out at Innovation Campus. That was just kind of fun, and I think, I think everybody was there. It wa, it was just a, a great opportunity for Brookings, and you listened to everybody talk, and I, I had the thought, why did it take us so long to get here? Because I think this is going to be a great program for Brookings and, and the farmers in our county that are raising oats. This is all gonna work out nice. On June twenty-eighth, we had a Lake District Subcommittee meeting. We're starting to talk about the setbacks in the Lake Park District. I think when you get an opportunity to see our draft, we're not going to be recommending any changes between the high-water mark and, and the building, but we are looking at some changes across the road and some frontage changes on setbacks, that you'll be seeing those recommendations come forward. On June twenty-ninth, I did the interview with the lady from East Central Realtors. Will we eventually see a report or a summary of a report on that?
Yeah, we're, I've just talked with Rayanne on that, and we're, found out she's, she's working on it, and we're trying to find a, she's coming back. And she's gonna, we're, we're gonna probably put out a poll to see for the people that took part in that, but also anybody else, you know, commissioners, zoning board members that want to come in and see, you know, invite all of our county department heads to go there, and we're looking at it, trying to find a date. And so we're looking in mid to late August seems to be the time that she'd like to come back. We're looking at maybe eight o'clock Wednesday, Thursday morning type of, of a time where she would put a presentation together, we'd get everybody there, serve breakfast type of thing, and everybody could listen to the report and suggestions and everything, so.
Great.
Yep.
The interview, the interview was interesting, her observations of Brookings. She'd done the tour with you, and, and I don't know if she'd already talked to some other people or not. It, it was kind of nice he, hearing somebody that's coming in cold to our community and saying, wow. So that was good. I don't know how it ended up for her, but that's what she was saying when I was doing the interview, so. And then on July fifth, I met with the Mayor's Committee on Mental Health, and there were people that were different stakeholders in what we've been dealing with on the mental health issues, in that these were the people that instigated the development of this committee are the caregivers for the mentally ill. The, the parents or the siblings, and they were there to talk about their stories as relates to how they're seeing mental health services delivered in Brookings County. They had some concerns about the court system, for example, and I didn't bring my hand out so I could talk about, they had a, a list of things. Number two was the court system, and, and they talked, they didn't know about Drug Court and what we were doing with Drug Court, and, and I told them a little bit about that, and they were pretty excited. Their, their main complaint is that we don't have a central place where people can get information about what's going on for treatment in, in Brookings County on mental health issues. They didn't know that the county commission had done anything with the hospital on the safe room issue. They think a safe room's real important. They didn't know that we'd reached some agreements on that. Their main adversary in Brookings County is East Central Mental Health, and they spoke about all the same concerns that we've heard before from law enforcement or the state's attorney's office or the judicial system as relates to the problems with East Central Mental Health. The caregivers see the same problems that the rest of us have heard in, in different meetings. This is going to be an ongoing committee. I think that some additional people are going to be invited to participate in it. The Mayor is, is asking Counselor Dan Hanson to, to chair that, and I think some things will be coming down, just, just waiting to hear on that. But what really, and, and I did share, because it was public information, what we talked about in our budget hearing with East Central, and that we're willing to do some things financially to help. We set some money in contingency for that if we can see some progress made with some of the, the issues, and we talked a little bit about that, and they didn't obviously know any of that. So there are some things that are going to be going on with that committee. I will say that in the two years I've been Commissioner, this is the third committee that I've sat in on mental health issues. It's always a different group of people, different stakeholders. I did say that maybe Terry from your office should be invited to participate because of the mental health commitments. I don't know if something will be forthcoming from that. I did say that maybe somebody from the sheriff's office because of the issues with the detention center. Seems to me like there should be one committee in Brookings looking at mental health issues and coming up with some recommendations and, and maybe some solutions, but we'll see what comes out of this group. It is a different mindset, because these are the caregivers, the people working every day with the people that need assistance, so that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions for you? All right, Larry?
On June twenty-second, I attended a beta meeting. The ridership still is increasing, and they threw some numbers out. There's eighteen thousand more rides this year compared to the same time last year. They also had a meeting with the, the school district and the state. There's a grant, application, tiger grant application, and Bruce Lynnholm from the state said it'd be nice if this grant becomes available to have a site selected. If the grant comes available, it'd be, be nice to have a site selected. It sounds like it'd be about eleven months before this grant would become available again. So we've formed a task force. Ben Stout with SDSU, myself, and Brian Ardrea on the committee, along with Brenda, looking for available land or somewhere that would be accommodating.
Are you, are you looking in, in the city or in Brookings County, or?
It's, some of the issues, it has to have water available and a sewer available. That's it's, that's kind of a challenge. They had one site, but there was no sewer available, so that's, they're just continuing to look, I guess.
How, how big are they wanting? Are they looking for five acres, two acres?
Three to four acres, I believe. They did receive last of the four buses that were through this grant program last year. It's gonna be nice, they say, to be able to get in just a preventive maintenance schedule instead of repairs all the time. Help out on that end. On the twenty-third, I attended an extension meeting. I did attend a General Mills meeting up on Innovation Campus after that. On July fifth, we did a special meeting for a bridge approval and, and also fireworks display. On July eighth, meeting, we had meeting out at RCPA Railroad over by Aurora, well-attended by some very important officials throughout the state. I feel is great, great for the community, not only Brookings, the whole county. And I think that's about all.
Thanks.
July twenty-third, we had called an extension board meeting to talk about relocating, and the board had lots of good questions. At two, I also attended the General Mills ribbon cutting at Innovation Campus. On June, June twenty-seventh, we had a special commission meeting. On June thirty, we, I went to domestic abuse. We didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't conduct any real business, but we did have a lengthy discussion on my being able to vote, because I'm always there, and I would have made the quorum had I been able to vote. So I think things may be changing in their bylaws. On July fourth, I did the Brookings Parade. On July fifth, we had a special meeting. On July eighth, I was also in attendance at the New Rail Siding Banner Breaking, and the Honorable Commissioner Krogman spoke very eloquently, I might add, and the newspaper even talked about that. Thank you very much for including the county in that. We were among a lot of officials, and Ryan, seriously, did a very nice job representing the county, so thank you. And then on July eleventh, I went to the Weed Board, and all the spraying's done in the townships. They're gonna be finishing up spot spraying on DOT. The county roads are done. And I guess that's about it.
Okay. On the twenty-third, again, we had the four-H Extension Board meeting. We discussed the proposal, potential for proposal here that we heard today. I attended President Sheekwin's reception later on the twenty-third, which was very well-attended at the McCory Garden Center there. On the twenty-eighth, the gal from our Smart Growth Grant that Commissioner Pierce met with, also, we met with her in the morning and gave her a tour of, of Brookings County and communities around the area, and so she, like I said before, she'll be coming back and putting together some ideas for us down the road. And then on the twenty-ninth, I had a BDC Nominating Committee report, and then again on, on the eighth here, the RCPNE Railroad bypass, which, again, you know, will help us as a county, because it's here. It's really gonna help Novita, Valero, and the South Dakota soybean processors, which is great to have it here, but it's also gonna help the state with the traffic and flow of, of all of our farmers' grain and, and stuff to market. That's been one of the things in the last couple of years, it sounds like, has been a ve, a big hurdle and a big cost problem, is getting to the market on time and at a re, rate, and what this allows is a train to be bypassed and two trains to be going in the same direction, and now there's a spot to put a full train bypass on there to keep going, so it should increase the traffic flow. There's two of them, which will help, I think, the whole state and all of our farmers throughout the state get their product where it needs to go, so really a nice deal, and it's appreciative, it's a good partnership, again, between the state and the private industry to, to help infrastructure, and we talked about that a little bit, that, you know, we take care of infrastructure, that's our job, and we do roads and bridges, but that railroad is an integral part of our infrastructure throughout the state, and it's great to have the RCPNE, and that's what the governor spoke about, too, is the ability to work with this railroad has been fantastic, and they're putting investment into South Dakota, so this is a, a really good deal, and I think it's great for the state, too, as much as it is for Brookings County, so, but it was great to be a part of that.
Tell them how they broke the banner. I thought that was...
They had a banner on the, on the rail, on the rail itself, and took a locomotive and came through it towards us and stuff like that, so that's pretty cool. But I think they could have made some money. They could have auctioned off to drive that locomotive. Counselor Corbett, I think, would have, would have paid some pretty good money to be the one driving that. So, but no, it was a, it was a good event, and again, a lot of people from across the state. We got a chance to talk to, you know, our DOT, head of DOT, which is always great. Governor was there, which is always great. Chance to thank them for their partnership on, on our, on our two thirteen and that kind of thing, so it's a good day. Appreciate commissioners that were there. That's a great, good showing, and so, no, it was a, it was a good one, so. Okay, I think that's about it. Next on the agenda is executive session in accordance to South Dakota Codified Law one dash two-five dash two. Numbers one, three, and four, personnel consulting with legal counsel and contract negotiations. So, do we need a motion to get an executive session? I think we do. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, I got a text from Ray...